Budget workshop session of April 20, 2021. Comedians call to order. If you'll. Everybody is here, so I guess we don't need a roll call. Make a point of that. And Ms. Bauer, if you will.
Fiscal year 2021-22 budget workshop.
Well, good morning again, Mayor, members of the council. We appreciate your time as always. Today, we're going to, again, do, start getting to more of a, of a, of a process now where we're excited about. And through all the work that's been done over the last two and a half months. With that, I'm going to turn this over, present part of the presentation to our budget and finance director, Lasek Camacho.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Today is our ninth budget workshop and also our final budget workshop on the fiscal year 21-22 budget. For today's presentation, we'll cover follow-up items from the April 8th workshop, summary of changes to the budget, the fiscal year 21-22 total operating budget, total budget and capital improvement plan. The first follow-up item from the last budget workshop is the primary property tax levy. The primary property tax levy could be increased by 2% annually. That 2% increase is about $122,000. The revenues from the 2% increase is proposed to be used as restricted funding source for presumptive cancer care for public safety. If the city does move forward with the increase in the primary property tax levy, we have to go through the truth and taxation procedures. So we are required to do two notices in May as well as a press release. The public hearing for the property tax adoption is on June 8th, and the adoption of the property tax levy is on June 22nd. And with that, I'll pause here to see if council would like to discuss the primary property tax levy.
Uh, Mayor, I know during our last workshop, we, we talked about the increase in our property tax and by 2% in order to cover some of the expenses we'll be incurring due to the firefighter cancer bill. And I have, as I've thought about this, I have had some, some reservations about it, and I just wanted to see where the council is today regarding this, this item. If we want to move forward with this 2% increase, or if maybe we take a stance of, let's wait and see.
I guess I'll go first. It, it is sort of a stance of, let's go forward as we wait and see. At any point up until late June, we can stop this process. We can actually stop it. Correct me if I'm wrong at any point, okay? At the same time, there is legislation that's moving at the Arizona Legislature that a member down there believes that he can get what he's trying to do through. If he does that, we won't have to do ours at all. We'll be able to do what we've been able to do for the last five, six years, and that's hold that property tax flat the way we have. But I caution everybody and I warn everybody, please think about if the legislature doesn't do that. This presumptive cancer is law now. Governor Ducey signed it. It's law. And it's not a matter of where, if we're going to have those claims, we'll have those claims. And we're also going to be running into a situation where the insurance carriers that we have, we're not going to want to cover this any, any longer. So we're, we're looking at a huge cliff, and I, I think we've got to start somewhere. Even though this is very, very small, 121,000 isn't big, and that might be some of your argument. Well, then why are we doing it? But you've got to start somewhere. You've got to move that first, first foot forward. You have to start somewhere. I think showing our firefighters that we're at least going in the right direction to try to make sure that we're going to meet with what the law requires, I think is important. As far as our citizens, I have no problem with a citizen that wants to talk about a slight increase in their property tax that we've held for the last five, six years to cover presumptive cancer that the Arizona State Legislature requires us to do. Money's got to come from somewhere. You could say, well, we could take the money that the federal government has given us. We don't even know where we can spend it yet. That's the other problem. Until they actually tell us where that money can be spent, we're, it's, it's just a pipe dream right now. I think we have to make a concerted effort to try to go in the right direction, doing the right thing. And if anything pops up that basically keeps where we don't have to do this, we can stop it in a heartbeat, and I'll be the first one that'll push to stop it. I don't, I don't want a property tax, but again, we have to figure out a way to cover ourselves. It, it's not a pipe dream, it's happening. I mean, this is real.
Thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate your concern about the issue, and I share that concern. But I do not support the solution of raising the property tax in any way, shape, or form. $122,000 is a manageable amount that reflects, think about it, one or two positions within the city budget next year that wouldn't be filled. Think about all the revenue that's being generated out by the Loop 303, new money. That can also be earmarked, portion of that can be earmarked in newer restricted fund. There, $122,000 is a drop in the budget when you look at a, at the size of the city budget and can be easily absorbed in a lot of different ways. I, and again, my concern stems from the fact that we are going to be looking at, staff is going to be bringing forward utility rate increases sometime in the future. So that's a double whammy for our citizens. We not only seek to increase the property tax, but we're, I'm sure a majority of council will support increasing the utility rates. The optics are bad. I don't think it's, it's a good move. If we, if we could not afford it from any other source, I would support this. But I know that there are other sources with which to start a restricted fund of 122,000. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I, I share your concern with the presumptive cancer and the, and the health of our public safety personnel. But for, for, really, not that 122,000 is not a lot of money, but it's not a meaningful amount of money to apply towards a problem that could potentially be this big. Especially because it, raising property taxes angers our constituents probably almost more than anything else that we could possibly do. We do have to, I mean, obviously, the legislature, they're getting ready to, you know, wrap up here in the next probably 30 days or so. And we're obviously going to be waiting to see what they do. But this is, as Councilmember Clark said, not a really a meaningful amount of money to apply towards this problem. And we do have some other, I mean, we, we have, we, the certificate of participation that we literally just voted on last week is going to afford us a pretty big savings in our PSPRS for our, our budgeting going forward. And that could potentially, when we talk about planning for the set aside, we could have a discussion about possibly planning for some money being set aside to address presumptive cancer when we have that discussion. But I, I, you know, I understand you're saying we could, we have up until June, what does this calendar say, June 22nd, actually, to adopt the property tax? But I'm, I don't want anybody to be into the impression that I'm going to support this if it goes forward. So I, I just don't think that it's worth angering our constituents. We have a, we're going to be going out for bonds next year, and we need to consider how, how raising property taxes is going to affect people's willingness to approve bonds next year that we really need. So it's not a meaningful amount, amount of money, I think, to pursue this, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Can somebody tell me what the 2% increase, what the average cost it would be to a Glendale homeowner?
Mayor, members of the council, we'll have to get back to you with that information.
Mayor, members of the council, give, give us a couple minutes. We'll, I think we can find that information, but we'll have to dig around a little bit here.
Okay, because I know we're, we're all talking, it, it's a, a small amount. Well, I know it is a small amount, and I assume it's not much for all the homeowners and property owners in Glendale. I'm in favor of starting this, just to make the statement that our, our public safety employees with this presumption cancer would be servicing the city of Glendale, going to homes, being out on our streets, protecting the public. And I, I don't think the citizens would be the least bit upset that we're putting money set aside to take care of the cancer victims that we might have.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm comfortable that our firefighters understand the strength of my commitment to their health and safety. It's been consistent for the past six years, so I'm not worried that doing something really insignificant on their behalf would be seen, or not doing something insignificant on their behalf would be seen as any lack of commitment to it. I'm comfortable where I stand in there and what I think, how they view me. This is not a significant amount of money. It won't even be a drop in the bucket towards solving the problem. It, I think doing it undermines the efforts to create a statewide solution to this problem, which I think is what we need to be working on. If we start sending the signal that we can piecemeal together a little bit from here and a little bit from there, and maybe come up with a solution, I think that's the wrong message to be sending. I think we need to stay focused on a statewide solution, work with other cities, and our representatives in the state legislature to put a real solution in place here. This is not a problem that's going away. If, if we do, if we're to do this 2% this year, then we're basically taking a step down the road that says, oh, yeah, and next year we'll do another 2%. And then the next year, we'll have to do another 2%, and another 2%, and another 2%, you know, that is statutorily allowed every year to be able to create any value. At this rate, it will take over five years, it looks well over five years probably, to accumulate a million dollars in the fund. And that's with doing the increase, the 2% increase. So I don't think this is a solution. I do think we need a solution. I offered a potential solution at our last meeting, and, and I think there are others out there. I think we still have real estate we could put on the market. And I just think we ought to be working at a statewide solution as well. So I can't, I don't support going forward with this concept. I think it sends the wrong message to our constituents, and in essence, the wrong message to our firefighters as well. The, we want to have a real solution to this problem. And I'm also concerned that, as was mentioned, that the impact of raising taxes, even in a small way like this, could be very detrimental to our effort to get bonds passed that we do need, that we can accomplish those bonds without raising taxes. But by doing this, I think it undermines our message to voters that when the bonds come up for election, that they can say yes without raising their taxes. We shouldn't be saying, we're not raising them here, but, oh, yeah, we did raise them there. Thank you.
Mayor, I would agree with some of the sentiments that have been mentioned here. And I think the number one thing that is driving my thoughts on this is that this is a state initiative, a state dictator mandate, and not that it's not good for our firefighters, they need this. But at the same time, it, the responsibility to fund it, I think, needs to go back to the state as a statewide initiative, and not having the cities try to scramble to come up with the monies that are needed. You know, there are other things that the state is considering, such as income tax reduction, which will have a big impact on the city finances if that goes through. And I, I believe we need to allow the state to do what it's supposed to be doing, which is to fund a program that they have initiated. And I, I think that the, the ball is, is started in doing that funding, and I think we need to allow it to go forward. It's not sufficient, the amount that is proposed, it won't cover nearly the cost of state, you know, cancer costs. But it, it is a beginning, and additional funding will need to come forward. And I think at that point in time is when we discuss, where do we need to come up with funding? Where do we need to find the funding to cover what is missing from the state funding? We don't know that number yet, and I think we ought to wait and see where that comes in at. And then we can always do what we need to do to raise the money to cover those costs.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I do have an answer for Councilmember Hughes' question. The 2% increase would be about 77, 77 cents per 100,000 of property value. For a 250,000 home, it would be $1.92. Again, property values go up and down, so that's just an estimate.
All right, thank you. So I, I've listened to everybody. I, I disagree with most of what you're saying because serving eight years in the legislature, I can assure you, legislature isn't concerned about what's best for Glendale. They're concerned about what, what's best for the legislature, which is what their job is. It's their job. They, they don't represent the city, they represent the whole state. And trying to get that many people from so many different districts to agree on anything is close to impossible. But I would caution all of you, if we don't start something now, if we don't get something going now, the accomplishments that we've done this year and last year, you may be looking at maybe giving up some money for your parks for some of the things that you fought so hard for the last two or three years, when for less than $2 or $3 per household, we could at least start something and show that we really are trying to make a difference. I, I think it's a mistake kicking the can down the road. It's something that this city has done for a long time. This council's done a great job of stopping doing that, but it looks like we're going to get back into that again. So it doesn't appear that we have what we need to make this thing go forward. So I don't know if we need an actual vote or just a consensus not to move forward. But reading the tea leaves, it doesn't look like we've got a consensus.
Mayor, that's all we need. Thank you.
The second follow-up item from the last budget workshop is the food tax. The food tax is a 2.5% tax rate. 1.9% goes to the general fund, 0.1% goes to public safety, and 0.5% goes to transportation. Each 0.1% of the sales tax generates approximately 658,000 in revenue. A reduction of 0.1% would equal a dollar per $1,000 in food purchases. And food purchase with food stamps or EBT are exempt from the tax. With that, I'll pause here for, if council would like to have a discussion on this as well.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for, to staff for bringing this information back. That's, that's one checkbox for me is that it's in the discussion every year. And that's, that's really important. If we've just put it in the back burner, don't ever bring it up, then we haven't met our duties to our residents. Question, the 658,000 reduction by reducing it 0.1%, is, is that, is our $730 million operating budget, or just our budget itself, reflective of the reduction or not?
Mayor, members of the council, no, the budget does not reflect that reduction at this time.
Okay, so then we would have to find where we're going, what we're going to reduce to make, make up the 658,000, oh, 658, yes. So I, I don't know that the council is going to approve a reduction. I, I say we do, and here's the thing. $1 per $1,000 in food, not very many people buy $1,000 of food at one point, at one time. And I'm not looking at just individual savings, but holistically as a city, how much can we save, right? And it's $658,000. But what, what I'm asking going forward is that we need to see a budget with that dollar amount reduced already, and then we can add back if we need to. Rather than bring a budget and then say, it doesn't include it, but you have to find it. I want to see the reduction already in it, and then if we, if the council wants to add it back, we can add it back. But I'd like to open up the reduction to council and just see what your thoughts are on, on, on a reduction this year or going forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. $1,000 in food purchases is somewhere between five and 10 weeks' worth of groceries for a family. So the savings in a year would be $5 to $10 per household, which is, you know, not a, not a significant amount of money. And we've got a lot of other programs available. I'm not saying $10 a year wouldn't be meaningful to somebody, but, you know, if it, if it's, if a household really is that, that tightly with their finances, we have programs available to help them. There's, there's the EBT, there's, there's ways for them to get food. We've got help with utilities, we have rental assistance, we have all kinds of other programs where we can help a family. And I literally, in six years, have had one person from out of town talk to me about the food tax. I, I don't know where the rest of you are hearing from people about the food tax. But, I mean, unfortunately, we're in a situation where we have, and I probably should have asked ahead of time for this, but what's our debt service going to be this fiscal year? We've, that's, that's our biggest issue, is we've got arena debt, we have Camelback Ranch debt, we've got all kinds of debt service, we've got, that is why we, I think, for now anyway, need to keep the food tax. Until some of this debt starts falling off our ledger, we've got big payments to make every year.
Mayor, members of the council, if, to answer Councilmember Tomachoff's question, the debt service is actually in the presentation on page 13.
Oh, okay, I'll wait.
From the general fund, it's about $35.2 million.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I have always supported a reduction in food tax. But based upon what I'm reading here today, I'm not supportive of the effort right now. I do like Councilmember Aldama's suggestion that staff come back to us next budgetary year with that reduction already built in. Again, you have to, our budget is increasing year over year. Why is it increasing? Because of all the activity out of the Loop 303. We're getting one-time construction sales tax money, but we're also getting property tax over years. And that's, and that's not even considering the Crystal Lagoons project, which projects an annual revenue source to the city of just south of $10 million a year. We are, thanks to the efforts of Mr. Phelps and staff, economically, we are doing very well. And our growth has been phenomenal, and it has allowed us to enjoy many of the things that we talked about this year, that we incorporated into the budget, for which I am very thankful, and I do thank staff for all of their hard work. But I say again that, that I spend about, oh, I'm going to guess and say about $6,000 a year on food. This would save me $6 a year. It's not meaningful even to poor people, the amount of savings. I think that maybe we need to have a council discussion about whether we would like to see it reduced by 1/10th year over year, and that staff automatically incorporate that concept into the budget before it's even brought to us. That might be a meaningful discussion. And even at that point, that would take 19 years to get rid of the sales tax on food, if I am doing my math correctly, which is debatable. So even though I support the concept of eliminating the food tax, I think bringing it now at the end of the budget cycle serves no good purpose. And I would rather see it, as Councilmember Aldama suggested, baked into the budget at the beginning of the budget process next year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with some of the sentiments that have been discussed. I am in favor of a, a reduction in our sales tax on food. We need to start somewhere. I think we could incorporate it into this year if we really wanted to. I would be in favor of trying that if, if we have council consensus to do so. But if not, I would like to see us have council consensus to include it in our budget next year, to have it included, at least a 1/10th of a percent reduction. And then, again, and I agree, you know, it's not a lot of money, the 0.1%. We're, we're talking a 1.9%, we're talking about 19 of those reductions over time. And then it does make a difference when you multiply it by 19. And that's, that would be, I think, our goal, is to eventually eliminate at least that part of the sales tax on food that we can. We cannot eliminate some of the sales tax on food because it's, it's a voter, voter, I don't know what you call it, initiated or whatever. But I would be in favor of moving it forward either this year or for sure next year to the 0.1%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. If, well, first off, I appreciate Councilmember Aldama bringing this up as an item for discussion. I think that every year, for the past few years, either he or I or the both of us together have brought up the discussion about, you know, should we be looking to decrease our sales tax, whether it be our general sales tax or our sales tax in food. And, and I think it's a discussion this council should have every year. And I think that time probably to have it is at the front end of the budget cycle, like is being talked about. But I'm not, I'm not in support of baking in to the budget, saying today that we're baking into next fiscal year's budget a reduction. I think that's a decision that we make prior to the beginning of, you know, when we start with our first reports on the budget, same time that we adopted that we would not be raising the property tax this year. That we were, you know, you know, we took that position early on in this conversation. So if my math is correct, the food, the food tax in total generates $16.45 million, of which 12 and a half million goes to the general fund, 3.3 million approximately goes to the transportation fund, and 658,000 goes to public safety, if my math is correct. And I have, like Councilmember Tomachoff, I have very few constituents that talk to me about lowering the sales tax on food. I do have a couple. One comes to mind, Joe. And, but I do have constituents that are constantly asking me about things that need to be, if we're going to accomplish or maintain or restore or take new steps towards, that's going to have to be funded through the general fund. And I'm reluctant to reduce general fund income as long as we have so many outstanding needs in the community. I would potentially consider looking at the allocation and perhaps reducing the amount that goes towards the transportation fund. It is funded in other, it's a good-sized fund. Mr. Friedline, I noticed your eyebrows raising there. But it's worth, it's worth consideration that maybe we should look if, if the distribution is what it should be. And even though the transportation tax was approved by the voters, I don't know that we, I don't know that we're prohibited from lowering it or lowering it or, you know, for any reason. I don't know that we're not under the Voter Protection Act at the state level. It doesn't trickle down to us. So we'd have to see. I'll open for advice, but I'm not, I'm not anxious to make a move now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the council members on not wanting to eliminate any part of the food tax right now. I can drive, I don't have anybody complaining to me about the food tax. Well, like Councilmember Turner, I have a lot of people thanking me for the roads now being completed in the neighborhoods in front of their, their houses. I'm getting a lot of positive feedbacks on things we're accomplishing. Also, I'm getting a lot of positive feedbacks on things we're accomplishing. Also, Phoenix shoppers are coming and paying that tax. I have a couple of Fry's right on 43rd Avenue in Glendale, and they are some of the busiest grocery stores I've ever seen. And, and thank you, Phoenix shoppers, for coming there. Our casual shoppers coming and buy at our Costco and buy foods and they're paying that sales tax for us. Also, our winter visitors will help pay that food tax. I don't have any complaints, and I think I'd just leave it alone for now. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. Again, this is exactly what the residents want their leadership to do, is have a discussion. And we just did. And I thought it was a very healthy discussion. The last couple of years I've brought this up, it was not just the food tax, it was the sales tax. Which one is more prudent to reduce? Which one is most beneficial to the residents? And every year that we bring it up, it's always at this meeting at the end. So is the reason why, and I would ask the mayor if you would ask for consensus that we add, we build it into the budget next year and then we add it back. And then with the discussion or the comments with regard to hearing from the residents, I think demographics lead the conversation on whether or not a sales tax or food tax impacts them. And so in my district, I'm, it's very often that I hear from families say, hey, reduce the tax. They don't ever say food tax or sales tax. They just say tax, period. It's the, it's the representative's responsibility of mine to come into the council and say, hey, this is the one that makes most sense to reduce. And so that's why I chose this year for the food tax. Last year, it was the sales tax. And then the comment to, that we're doing a lot in the city, absolutely. I gotta tell you, we, this city does not look anything like it did years ago, four years ago, five years ago. And there's a cost. There's a cost for improving our city. And I get it. Absolutely, there is. But again, two things here. Asking the council to give consensus to bring, build it into the budget, and then we put it back in if we need to. And how do we do that? And then just keeping the discussion early in the process and not, not at the end of the last day. So my final comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I, and I understand your position, Councilmember Aldama, but I would remind everybody about the email we received from our intergov, Ryan Lee, on April 9th about the potential reduction in state income tax, that the legislature is contemplating a one and a half billion dollar cut, which would mean a reduction to Glendale of almost $10 million a year. So, I mean, there's a lot of other things at play here. And so I'm, at this point, I would not be willing to say bake it in. We start our budget discussions early in the year. We have plenty of time to have that discussion next year if we decide that that's what we want to do. But I would say, at this point right now, we're not clear enough on what the outcome is going to be of this legislative session to actually, for me anyway, be comfortable in saying, yes, let's do that. Thank you.
Mayor?
Hold on a second. Yeah, go ahead.
I concur with Councilmember Tomachoff. I've, I guess I've thought about it in our listen to the discussion. And I had forgotten about the state's run at reducing income tax, which has a dramatic effect on every city's budget. So I no longer support my own idea of baking it into next year's budget. I'm, I'm willing to consider it early on in the budget process, but at this point, I, I couldn't support it. Thank you, Mayor.
My, my two thoughts is basically, it was pointed out in what legislature's talking about doing, which goes back to our earlier discussion and why I was pushing for that. I think that we've got some major challenges. And I think if we're going to do anything as far as cutting any income coming into the city or getting rid of income that we know we have coming, I think, I think it's way premature for us. I think, I think we're going to have some issues coming up. COVID-19 issues are going away, which means we won't be getting the same Fed money. A lot of things we've enjoyed in the last year, we're not going to have the luxury of in the coming years. I can't support a tax reduction right now as much as I would like to get rid of all of it, not just a part of it, but real, reality is, we need it. We just need it. Mr. Phelps, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council. So just as a reminder, the, the, the best time to discuss kind of, you know, your, your policies is when we do the forecast, which happens towards the end of the year after staff has had, and we do it, I think, first meeting, first week or two in January, where we really have a better picture of what's happening with the economy and, and where our sales tax growth is at, et cetera, et cetera. And then what we normally do is we tell you, based on the following assumptions, here's how we will build the budget going forward. So that would really be the appropriate time, not knowing, for example, what's happening with the, the shared, state shared income tax, as an example. To, to make the decision today without knowing that, it just, the normal process is do it when we're doing our, our financial forecast. That's where we build our assumptions around. And then you can, and that's when we get consensus on freezing the 2% property tax. We talk about the trans, the GO tax. We talk about all of our sales tax items at that point. But we'll provide you with what the, what our forecast is for the coming year of what that revenue will be. And as Councilmember Clark indicated, there's a gigantic windfall of, of sales tax from construction. We'll, we'll have that projection and information available, and we can share that with the council. And then I think you can make a thoughtful decision. But normally, we would wait and do it after we, when we roll out our, so we'll remind the council when we do the presentation on our forecast that, to remind the council, this is what we will beginning building our budget based on these following assumptions. And if the council wants to change those, then we would, we would do it based on that direction.
Next.
The next slide is the summary of changes from the last budget workshop. The last budget workshop, council had consensus to increase the cost of living adjustment for nonrepresented employees from 1% to 1.5%. There's also one position reclassification from community services. There is no budgetary impact. The current position is building maintenance supervisor, reclassified to facility maintenance supervisor. Again, there is no budgetary impact for this reclassification. We've also added appropriation to, to pay the PSPRS unfunded liability. That appropriation is in nondepartmental for $260 million. And the capital carryover has also been updated. With that, the total budget appropriation is about 1.2 billion, 730 million in operating, 280 million in capital, 139 million in contingency, and 93 million in debt. The debt here that you're seeing includes general obligation bond, excise tax, and also any water debt that we have. The operating budget for fiscal year 21, 22 is about $730 million. The budget increased by about $242 million from the last time you saw this budget. The increase is again due to the 260 million in appropriation for the PSPRS unfunded liability. And you're seeing that in the big pie chart, slice of the pie chart here for nondepartmental. Nondepartmental increased by 260 million. I also want to point out that police and fire, there was a reduction of a total of 17 million for, for both departments due to the, the, the reduced contribution for fiscal year 21, 22 PSPRS. The next slide is the capital improvement plan.
Hold on, hold on.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. So the reduction, the 17 million reduction in police and fire, does that basically just, that does, that's money that just stays in the general fund?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I could just add something to that. That's an estimate at this time. So we updated the budget to the estimate that our folks and our partners from RBC have given us. In terms of the refinancing, we won't really know what that savings is until the end of next year. But we did update the budget to the estimate that we were provided by our financial advisors at RBC.
The next slide is the pie chart on the fiscal year 21, 22 capital improvement plan. The total budget is 280 million. This budget decreased by 9 million, again, due to the CIP carryover adjustments. The largest component is still facility maintenance at 82.6 million. Second largest is streets at 53.7 million. And the third largest is water at 48.4 million. This slide is the summary of personal changes. You saw this at the last budget workshop. The total FTE that's being added to the fiscal year 21, 22 budget is 38.5. Of that, 22.5 in general fund, three in internal service funds. The enterprise funds had a reduction of one FTE. And for the special revenue funds, an addition of 14 FTEs.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
This previously was, I believe, 39 positions. Is that enterprise fund reduction of one position account for the diminishment by one?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe we had the 38.5 in the last meeting, and we also had the reduction of one FTE in the, in the enterprise ones then.
For some reason or other, I thought it was 39. Thank you.
With that, I'll turn over the presentation to Ms. Lindsay.
I just wanted to, thank you, Mayor. The, the reduction of the employee in the enterprise fund, basically that person was moved over to budget and finance. Is that right? So that really wasn't a staff reduction. It was, is that right?
Mayor, members of the council, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, the next few slides that we're going to go through are highlights that are included within the fiscal year 21, 22 budget. The first thing that we'd like to make note of is that the budget is balanced, that all the funds are meeting their fund balance requirements, that there is an item included in the budget for employee incentives for innovation or excellence in service. It also includes a 1.5 cost of living adjustment plus performance pay of 1.5% available for non-MOU employees. This next slide demonstrates the sources and uses of funding for the fiscal year 21, 22 general fund budget. The general fund has a beginning unassigned fund balance of approximately $93 million. We have operating revenue at approximately $544 million, a transfer in of $30 million for total sources for the general fund at approximately $667 million. We have operating expenditures at approximately $481 million, transfers out of $122 million. $3 million of contingency is included within the general fund budget for total uses of $606 million, with an unassigned fund, ending fund balance of approximately $61 million. The next slide goes over the transfers that are included in and out of the general fund.
Hold on.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious with the contingency, what, is there a best practice of how much contingency? Should it be based on the amount of the budget? Or, I don't remember.
Mayor, members, Mayor, members of the council, it varies. We've been looking at what this number is, and it's been $2 million for a couple of years because that was during the period of time when we were setting aside fund balance to get to the council's fund balance goal. We think 3 to 5 million is probably more appropriate. So we've gone ahead and increased it from 2 million to 3 million this year. We do use the contingency in general fund. And so, and there are occasions, or there have been, where we've had to go to another fund and move its contingency over to the general fund in the event that there was some type of, for example, air conditioners going out or, or things like that. We, we have had to use that contingency. So we think for next year, 3 million is, is appropriate. It could be higher, but that's what we are recommending to set it at for now.
Okay. I mean, is there a reason why we wouldn't, I mean, we don't, we don't need to spend it unless we need it. But if we don't appropriate it, then we don't have the money available. Is that right?
Again, Mayor, members of the council, we think this is okay. We have contingency in other places. Remember, from our last workshop, we talked about the, the $67 million in, in estimated federal funding coming in. And also, the proceeds from Glen Lakes are sitting in contingency, excuse me, also in a capital project fund. So with that amount of contingency located in other places, I, I wouldn't recommend at this time increasing this number. But it's totally, it's up to the council. It is your budget, so.
Okay. I just was curious whether, you know, I mean, I do realize it's higher than it has been. But I know the reason it's been $2 million for several years is because that's basically, we were, we were trying to put, push money into the, into the fund balance, which we've exceeded our goal in the fund balance. So, but we do have that other money available. I just, I didn't know what the, there's a, there's a best practice, the fund balance is, what, 25% of operating revenues? Is that what our general target was for our, our operating revenues are higher now. But if there was a best, best practice number that we should be working towards for our contingency, based on the amount of our budget, I don't know what that is.
Wait, Mayor, members of the council, I have to get back to you on that. I don't know exactly what, if there is a best practice or a percentage, I'm not actually aware of that. I'd have to do some research on it. I'm just aware of more of what was, has worked best for us as a city.
Okay, all right.
And its usage over the years.
Mayor? To follow up on the contingency issue, was the 2 million in contingency from last year's fiscal budget entirely consumed? Did we use it all?
Mayor, members of the council, no. I believe we've used approximately 600,000 of the contingency for the air conditioning replacements in City Hall. And then we also added 500,000 for design of the City Hall.
Okay. So at this point, we've been able to deal with the amount of funding, an appropriate amount of funding in contingency, because historically, we don't seem to use it all year over year. Would that be an accurate statement?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Clark, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you. So we've had for several years a target of $50 million in our reserve for our general fund. And I'm looking at this ending unassigned fund balance projection here of $60,815,000. Is that the same line on the budget that we've been targeting to get to 50 million?
Mayor, members of the council, the number that you're speaking of 50 million is the same as that number. However, the target is actually not $50 million. The, the target for the fund balance is 25% of our ongoing operating revenue. So last we did that calculation, it was actually closer to 61 million. However, as it's been pointed out, those operating revenues can change over time. And in the calculation of the 61 million, we didn't do a lot of work on pulling out one-time revenues, such as the revenues from construction sales tax and things like that. So part of what's driving that number to be a little bit higher, our contingency, this contingency that's here, and also, you know, one-time revenues that have been coming in that we anticipate spending over time, such as the CARES fund balance that we talked about last fall. So it's a little bit higher than we might think. It's, it's not much higher than the 25% right now. But it, it is within that range, considering all of the different funding sources that we have and some, some unknown projects in the future will be starting to draw that down. But it's a little bit higher next year, but over time, it will get back to where it should be closer to, if that makes sense.
Yes, I think it does. And Mayor, if I could continue then. So not counting CARES Act funding, Rebuild America funding, and it was one-time federal money that we've received, does our general fund unassigned fund balance federal money that we've received, does our general fund, unassigned fund balance, does that represent twenty-five percent? Have we achieved, I know that we were using fifty million as a target, but I suppose that was shorthand because that's what it was, that was what the number was when we said we need it. So we, that was kind of shorthand. So if the real number is twenty-five percent, can we say that we've achieved that goal regardless of the one-time federal money we've received? Or is it only because of the one-time federal money that we've received it?
No, Mayor, members of the council, yes. It's been achieved, it is twenty-five percent of ongoing revenue and it doesn't include that one-time federal money because we have that coming in and going back out. We show it as if it were an in and an out at the same time, like, as if we were spending it.
Okay. And then does it include one-time, but I'm assuming that it would include one-time revenues such as the, you know, the sale of the Bank of America building that we did, the sale of Glen Lakes Golf Course, those sorts of things?
Mayor, members of the council, it does include that, but again, some of those items, and I'll take Glen Lakes as an example, we show it coming in and then we also show it going out. It's part of that big contingency number. We haven't shown what it's going out to because that's still awaiting council decision, but we do show them as an in and out so that they don't increase the fund balance when we know that it's going to get spent.
Okay. So then it's safe to say that the council's goal of achieving a twenty-five percent reserve fund has been achieved based on the strategies that the council and put in place with the advice of staff and with the blessing of the growth that we've had out in the western area? Fair enough?
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, this is, to me, has always been a great conversation. I know that when former Assistant City Manager Tom Dunsing was here, we had a number of conversations when I first arrived, knowing that the council had stated, you know, a fairly aggressive goal on, on the, what's the appropriate amount of money to have for fund balance. And I, and our last staff maybe is a follow-up to this, maybe to go back and look at GFOA guidelines because they typically will give us best practices. But if, back at least when I first got here, the GFOA was saying that an appropriate level of fund balance actually is more in the fifteen to twenty percent range, so the twenty-five would be at the high end. I know very few, and I do monitor other budgets in our surrounding area, of have a true twenty-five percent fund balance in their general fund. And I would just, I would just say that there, just like there is a number that is too little from a best management perspective, there is also a number that's too large, in my opinion. And the reason why I say that is, is that if you're, if you're sitting on money that's basically only, not even, it's actually diminishing each year because of inflation. We're getting roughly, you know, a hundred-and-ten, a hundred-and-twenty basis points. Inflation maybe is at, at a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred basis points. In reality, the money you have in your fund balance is somewhat going backwards in terms of value. Meanwhile, if you don't expend it on priority items, things like maintenance in our parks, maintenance in our facilities, in our fleet, then those costs actually, by delaying investment and maintaining things correctly, that cost can actually escalate faster. So there is, there is a right number, and I think, again, I'd like to ask staff maybe to go back and maybe just to kind of research what GFOA or other, other, you know, kind of associations doing that. But I think the twenty-five percent, we have achieved that. It's been, I think, a great goal of this council. And, but I also say, I think there is a, a number that can be too high just as easily as there's a number that's too low. And I think right now we're in a good, a good position, but you have some flexibility that if there are some priorities this council wants to address in the next couple of years, you know, you could tighten that number down a little bit and I still stay, and still stay within really best practices.
Mr. Phelps, I'm glad you brought that up because that gives me a segue for my, my next question to the council and management. Does anybody have any reason why we, if, if we're not going to do property tax, what if we were to take eight-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and put them in a special presumptive cancer account? We're not spending the money we have up there if we need it. Sort of a contingency in one sense, but it also gives us a little safety net. Any objections to doing that?
Mr. Mayor, I would support that concept.
Where, thank you, Mayor. Where, where does, where does the, does it come from risk management? Is that where the, the claims, is that how the presumptive cancer works? I'm not even sure. Where would we be talking about putting this money?
Mayor, members of the council, the presumptive cancer claims are paid out of the Workers' Compensation Fund. And in that fund, based on the analysis given to us by HR Risk Management and our actuaries, we've already put aside into the risk, I'm sorry, into the Workers' Compensation Fund in this budget, we've already put aside the amount we think will be needed to pay those claims for the next year. Now, again, they can be higher or lower and adjustments may need to be made along the way because it's only an estimate at this time, but for now, we did increase the amount into the Workers' Compensation Fund in anticipation of those claims.
Yeah, she did, she did answer my question. So basically, we, we feel like we, we've set aside enough money to cover any, any claims that may arise. And if we don't, then we have, we have contingency also that could be used for that.
That's correct. Mayor, members of the council, that's, that's correct. That fund, we increased the amount going to the Workers' Compensation Fund. Ms. Camacho is looking to get me a number on what that was. And that fund also has contingency and the general fund has contingency in the event that the claims are higher than we anticipated.
Mayor, if I could continue. So, and based on what, what the operating budget is, that, at least we're, our, our rule right now or what we've been working with is twenty-five percent of our operating revenues is closer to sixty-one million than sixty million?
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. It's closer to sixty-one million. It's based on twenty-five percent of operating, ongoing operating revenues. So we attempt as best we can to take out one-time operating revenues. So for example, the CARES Act money and different things like that are not ongoing operating revenues. So we remove those and then we do the calculation and it is around sixty-one million.
Okay, thank you.
The only concern I have about this is if, if we put aside money, the legislature could say, well, look, Glendale came up with a solution, the rest of your cities, you go do the same thing. And then takes them, I feel this is a burden that the state needs to take care of and we need to allow them to take care of it. If they fail to take care of it, then we'll have to take emergency actions and do these kinds of things. But I don't know that it's in our best interest to get ahead of what the responsibilities of the state are because this is a state responsibility. And I know, having spoken with, with folks about it, that there'll be plans in the future to continue to lobby the state to fund this program. And I think they need to. I think there are a lot of revenue sources available to us as a council to meet the needs of the presumptive cancer program. I believe there, they'll be there and there'll, there'll be ways for us to fund it. I just don't know, jumping on that right now is the right way to do it because it sends the wrong message, in my opinion, that, that we are, we, we can just do this and take care of it and then there's no problem. And that's not the case. This is a, a problem that, that is statewide and the state needs, the state needs to come up with a solution for it. And then as there's gaps in the program, we will need to fill those gaps in. And then we'll have the opportunity, that fund balance isn't going to go away, it'll still be there. And I think that's when we then take action to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, one second. I, I completely understand what you're saying, but I disagree with you. It, it's our responsibility. We can't control what the state, what the legislature will or will not do. And if, if we're not, if we're not looking forward as we are talking through this budget process and planning and expecting and all those unexpected things that happen, shame on us. The state's not going to step in and balance out if we did something wrong. I think it's, I think it's up to us to do everything we can to make certain that we're covered. We're not raising taxes here, which was your earlier concern. We're simply taking money that we have and putting it into another fund balance. So it's not like we're spending the money. You can call it anything you want to, but the fact is that it could cover us in the future if something unexpected happens. More importantly, if we have claims and they do come back and change the state's shared revenues, we got problems. We got some serious problems. And I'm just not willing to take that chance. I, I think it's too risky. That's my opinion. Mr. Aldama, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Just simply put, I can support the proposal that's on the table using the fund balance. Very, thank you.
I heard about half of what you said.
Ask, I can support the proposal you have on the table using the, the fund balance for the firefighter preemptive cancer.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I understand your position, but I disagree with it. We have, we have taken responsibility and planned for it, as Mr. Rio said. We've set aside money to, to what we feel would be the right amount of money for potential claims this coming year. We are taking our, taking responsibility for firefighters and plan for it by the, the way the budget's written. And in the event we don't have enough money, we have contingency. I would say then, then put the extra eight-hundred thousand dollars in contingency and then you don't, doesn't get spent if we don't need it. I, I feel like it's already been planned for and I agree with Councilmember Melner. We need to stand back and let the state take responsibility for the law that they just passed and see what they're going to do. Basically, at this point, it's an unfunded mandate. They're talking about taking, you know, state, the income tax away from cities. Let's just stand back and see what happens. We've planned for this for this year. I trust the people, our, our budget and finance people, that they've adequately planned for potential presumptive cancer claims, that they've addressed it and set aside enough money to handle it. And if they don't, if we don't, we have contingency money available to handle that. We're not going to leave our firefighters hanging without taking care of them if they have cancer, but let's stand back and let's see what the state does. I really do agree with Councilmember Melner on this, that let's, they've, they've put us in this position, let's see what they're going to do. Thank you.
I, your comment actually made me think of a story that my father-in-law told me when he, he and his brother were kids in Texas and they went down to one of the tanks to go swimming in, what they call a tank down there in Texas is, is a pond. It's a true story, but it's, it's my father-in-law and he's such a cool guy anyway. Him and his brother were swimming and his brother started hollering to his brother, my father-in-law, that he had been bit by a snake. And he got him out of the water and got him up on shore and sure enough, he got bit. And, and he said they were both pretty young and, and his brother, Herschel, was, was panicking and crying and screaming and he said, what are you going to do? What are you going to do? And he said, well, let's, let's just wait and see what happens. That's a true story. I didn't make it up, that's a true story. Now, it wasn't a poisonous snake, thank God. There were a couple of kids, but, but it's a true story. Again, you know, I, I don't think that it's prudent upon us to wait and see what the state's going to do. We know, but we know what the state's trying to do. And that wasn't, that wasn't a mean poke, that was just a story. It just reminded me of that. But again, I, I think, I think that we need to really be cautious. If, if all of these things do transpire in the negative, that's a huge hit to us. It's a monster hit. And at that point, there are going to be things that we can't undo. And so, again, you know, we can continue talking, but I, I believe that we've got a consensus. I will allow you to speak some more.
Okay. I was just waiting, are you finished? Okay. I don't, I disagree with the fact that we, we're standing back, we have planned for this. They've, they've, they've done the calculations and they've planned and, and allocated funding to handle presumptive cancer claims. It's not like we're saying, we're not doing anything, state. We've budgeted and planned for what they anticipate is going to happen this next fiscal year. We have, I trust their planning, that they've planned for this and that, that we're ready to handle it and if we're not, we have contingency. I just think the, the optics to the state legislature are, okay, then let the cities handle it. And that we really, the sixty, twenty-five percent of our operating revenues is sixty-one million or closer to sixty-one million than it is sixty million. There's potential for losing state income tax and other things that could possibly be happening. And so I, I feel, I'm comfortable in trusting the planning that our budget and finance people have done to manage these claims this next fiscal year. I'm not saying we haven't done anything and that we're not doing anything. I'm saying I trust that they've budgeted with their expertise and that we're going to be able to handle and take care of our firefighters this next fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor?
Who's speaking? Go ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of thoughts. First of all, staff really appreciates the, the fact that this council is so attuned to this particular issue. From my conversations with other city managers throughout the valley, I can, I think I can say with full accuracy, there's not another elected body at the, at the local level that's putting more energy and time and awareness into the presumptive cancer issue. Many of the councils and cities are really just, are, they're waiting to see what will happen in the future. We've had this in our dialogue now for some time and again, so I just want to be very complimentary that I think this council has, is really being responsible in terms of looking at those future obligations that we may have. The, there is a certain amount of frustration from my perspective is this new legislation has a potential of a tremendous impact on local jurisdictions. And I've yet to see a single article in a newspaper, I've yet to see a single article on TV news story on the impact of this bill being signed. It has been absolute crickets by the media, even though the potential liability to local government is significant. When I inquired of our legislative team about what the fiscal note was on this particular bill, the legislature, in their, for whatever reason, I like to say wisdom, but for whatever reason, chose to do a fiscal note that ignored, ignored all retirees that are actually covered under this particular legislature. All they looked at was an actuarial number for existing public safety and what their potential medical costs are. We believe there to be in PSPRS today, almost fifteen-hundred retirees that are covered now under the presumptive cancer bill. And when you look at actuarial numbers from national health organizations, there's about a nine to eleven percent chance that between age now to sixty-five, they will come down with one of the twenty-five presumptive cancers that are covered in the bill. So let's talk about that. If we say it's, let's say it's five percent of a hundred, of fifteen-hundred people, that's seventy-five cases. We had one case here in Glendale, as you're aware of, that we believe the total cost to, to treat this illness for the life of the illness will be in excess of five million dollars, a single case. And the legislature totally ignored the fact that they're, they have to cover retirees and by they, meaning us, we have to now start projecting what our two-hundred-plus retirees, what the impact's going to be to us going into the future. So there is a certain amount of frustration, but I will say that with, with HR and Jim Brown and his team and with LaSette and Vicky, we are on top of this. And what we would fully envision doing is that each year during our, as we go back to our forecast and we start looking at our assumption, we too will also be building in what we think will be additional amounts that we'll have to set aside in the budget as we did this year, where we, where we, you know, really increase the amount of money into our workers' comp. This is not going away. We will likely have to see increases out of the general fund to support the presumptive cancer going forward. But again, I just want to compliment the council. I, I, there is a level of frustration that why this is not being talked about. And I don't believe until the media and the other cities start talking about this, will there be any pressure put on our state legislature to step up since it's their bill and to help find a funding solution to take care of this? And, and then you have to then layer in the, the irony of rolling back a state income tax that will have huge impact in a couple of years on every single city and then you layer on additional costs for things like presumptive cancer. It's, it's just absolutely going in the opposite It's just absolutely going in the opposite directions. Now, I want to be clear. This is not a statement on whether we should have a presumptive cancer bill in place. You know, we understand the need for presumptive cancer. We understand the program. But the state has to come in and start helping the cities with this. The city of Glendale can handle a couple of cases. Can you imagine being a town or city in this state of under, say, 5,000 to 10,000 in population that gets hit with just one case, let alone maybe two cases, over the next couple of years? And it would have to have a drastic impact on their ability to pay for critical public safety services, because it's the biggest part of the general fund is public safety. So obviously, for whatever reason, the media hasn't decided to cover this. I hope this council continues to talk to your colleagues, continues to educate, you know, your citizens and your districts, because it is an issue that it's not going away. And while we're not happy with the state's solution today, it doesn't mean that we can't, through education and continual work with our legislature, encourage them to find a funding solution for the cities. And so, sorry for the lengthy comments, but again, I do want to say, I think this council is showing great leadership here in the valley by at least having these kinds of discussions around budget time and recognizing that we need to be doing the thoughtful thing into the future of making sure we can fund this adequately. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps? I will again go back and try to, not nearly as eloquent as Mr. Phelps, but this isn't going away. It's going to get worse. We have the money available. If we don't spend it, it's still there. It's not like we lost it. I think we need to get ahead of this, not staying with it. And I think the staff does a fantastic job, but no, there's not one person sitting over there that can tell you whether a retired firefighter from Glendale is going to come down with cancer tomorrow. It's impossible. It's a best guess, but it's impossible. I just think if we have that little bit bigger cushion, I think the city would be in a lot better shape. So I would ask for a consensus.
Mayor, I want to make sure I understand exactly what you're asking to do with how, where this money would go. Would it be just tagged in the contingency fund, or where would it be?
And that would be up to Mr. Phelps and Budget. As long as it's earmarked, if you want to use that word, it may not be the best word to use. As long as it's earmarked, I don't care where they put it, as long as we know that we've got it set aside for that.
Mayor? Maybe I'll ask staff on this, but I guess what I'm hearing right is it's really about increasing the amount of contingency in our workers' compensation fund, which we've increased. So what you're suggesting is we would take 815,000 of the projected general fund, unreserved fund contingency, and putting 815,000 and put it into the workers' compensation fund itself? Is that what?
The unassigned fund balance, yeah. And I'm just going off the numbers they have there. So instead of 60 million, 815, just 60 million would be left there. The 815 to 83 would be set aside for presumptive cancer claim.
Mayor, members of the council, I believe that is what, if I'm understanding what you would want us to do, that is what we would do. We would take the funds actually and transfer them into the workers' compensation fund. And then the next question would be, do you just want them in the workers' compensation fund for all types of claims? Or within that fund, council can then ask us to restrict them, to restrict that amount to only presumptive cancer claims?
Exactly.
Mayor? I support that, but I really don't know that earmarking it is a good idea, because I wouldn't want to give the state legislature anything they can point to that we've set aside for that. And I wanted, I forgot to ask when I was talking to Budget and Finance before, how much did we increase that contingency this year in anticipation for some possible presumptive cancer claims? So you said we increased it, but I didn't ask you how much.
Mayor, members of the council, we increased the amount of funding to the fund, not the contingency. It's actual appropriation in the fund, and it was increased by $1.6 million. So it went from, it's up to 4.7 million, I believe, now.
Okay. And Mayor, if I could, how much is the contingency?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was 4.7. We increased it by 1.6. It's now 6.4. And how much is the contingency?
Mayor, members of the council, give us a minute. We're looking into it.
And Mayor, if I could, I don't like the optics of, I mean, we are, that's a big increase right there. And I just don't, I'm fine with putting it into our, just in the contingency, but not necessarily earmarking it, because chances are, if it's needed, it'll be there because they've planned for it. But I don't want to, don't think it's a wise decision to give the legislature anything to point to that, well, Glendale's taken care of it, as Councilmember Melner said. The other cities should be able to take care of it, too. The money's there to take care of our firefighters if they have cancer claims. We've taken care of the firefighters that have had cancer. There was some confusion initially with, I think the first time I ever heard about presumptive cancer was maybe a year and a half or so ago. I wasn't even really aware of it. But, I mean, our intention is to take care of our firefighters and plan for it through the normal budget process. A $1.6 million increase in that workers' comp fund is a big increase. So I would support putting the other 800 and some thousand dollars in there, but not necessarily earmarking it in the event there may be some other catastrophic injury also, you know, that's not related to presumptive cancer. You know, other things could happen to our employees besides just the presumptive cancer. So depending on how the fund would end up paying out, if the money was needed, it could be used for whatever it would be needed for. Say we had a big presumptive cancer claim, and then the account's depleted, and then we have a police officer that's injured that needs the workers' comp fund, and now we've earmarked the money for presumptive cancer, and we don't have the... So I'd be more comfortable in just saying, put the money in the contingency, the workers' contingency, and make it available. But we could end up being sorry that we earmarked it. If we have a presumptive cancer claim, we exhaust the money, and then we have another claim, and now we earmarked the contingency that we can't use for some to help another employee.
Mayor? I think, I get the point, and I hope everybody else does. We're adding, the state is adding a whole new group of people that are now eligible for cancer benefits. It's not the usual ride that we've been going through for the past few years. I do share the mayor's concern that this is an item that is going to balloon considerably. Because if I remember correctly, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, it's no longer the claimant's responsibility to prove that that person got cancer on the job. It's now the city's responsibility to prove that they didn't get cancer on the job. I mean, the legislature has done a number on cities that is unbelievable. I believe that there is reason for major concern that it's not cancer the way we used to play, pay claims. I think the idea of earmarking 815,000 into a restricted fund within workers' compensation for presumptive cancer claims is a wise thing to do, and I continue to support it. And as far as the legislature is concerned, what Glendale does or does not do is but a drop in the bucket compared to the other 28 cities in the valley that are ignoring it. And all the other, what do you think is going to happen when a small town like Snowflake gets one or two presumptive cancer claims? They are going to raise the roof, bring media attention like we've never seen before, and then the legislature will pay attention. In the meantime, it doesn't hurt to prepare and be on the safe side. I don't think the legislature will even be aware of what Glendale has done unless we turn around and issue a big press release. Glendale has put aside 815,000 for presumptive cancer claims. So under the circumstances, I support the mayor's concept. I think it has to be a restricted fund within workers' compensation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I would hope that everybody, including the people that are watching this, understand we're not complaining about firefighters that end up with cancer. That had nothing to do with this. We're simply trying to figure out, how do we legally fulfill our obligation and what the law now requires? Period. And we can plan all we want to, but again, this is one of the very few times that we actually have some money where we can set aside. I'm positive for serving eight years at the legislature. You don't have members sitting down there going through every city's books, trying to figure out, what do they set aside for different things? That's not what they do. They have their hands full. This is one of the few legislature that actually has money to spend, and that's why they have fights. If they didn't have any money to spend, it'd be a short session, and they'd be out of there. They actually have a very large surplus theirselves. So they're not going to worry nearly as much about what we have, is they're assuming that if they have a large surplus, everybody else does, too. That's sort of the way it is. It's everybody thinks that everybody's like everybody else. So again, I'll take one final comment, and then we're going to move forward with this.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe I didn't make my point very well. I'm not disagreeing with you that we set the money aside. But my point is, just say, for example, that we have two or three presumptive cancer claims, and we exhaust the $6 million that we have set aside, and then we have another, and we've set aside this 800,000, but we've earmarked it for presumptive. Would it be first, are you talking about first spend? I'm just saying, if it's not categorized or earmarked, that we basically spend down, pay the claims, and that if we end up that we've paid a couple of big presumptive cancer claims, that the money's still available for other workers' comp claims. I just don't want us to box ourselves in unintentionally to not being able to use the money if we need it. So...
And I guess the answer to that is, there's no time where this council, staff can't bring it to council and say, "You earmarked money. We need money somewhere else. Can we get approval to change that?" And we can certainly do that. We can certainly do that. I seen him raising his hand. Mr. Phelps?
Just for the council, what we could do today is first move the 815,000 into the workers' compensation fund. You'll still have other opportunities if you want to think about it in terms of earmarking it or segregating that amount off. But for today's purposes, you know, to keep things moving along, we can go ahead and move that into there. We'll bring this back as you get ready to adopt the final budget. You guys have an opportunity to kind of think through the best way to do that. And so, the decision wouldn't have to be made today on whether it's segregated or not, but we can certainly take action to move it and increase the workers' comp fund by the approximate 815,000.
Thank you. And I really don't like the word earmarked, and I'm the one that brought that up. It's basically another silo, just a place to park the money in case we need it, and if we don't need it, then it's there.
I can support doing this, but at the same time, this is a one-time money. This is not going to address the problem, and that's what I'm gearing towards. There are states in the country who have statewide programs, and that's what I'd like to see us do. That's what I could see happen. And I just don't want us to go out and take money from other opportunities we have to improve our city to address this issue when there could be other ways of funding it. But we will have to have a conversation, a serious conversation, on how we are going to long-term support this if the state doesn't come up with a program. I believe that there are plans in place for that to happen, and that's what I will encourage to see happen. But nevertheless, I know we have to prepare. I'm a little uncomfortable doing it because I don't want to send the message that, "Don't worry about the cities. They're going to cover it. They have money in their budget. They can cover it." We're going to have to come up with some long-term strategies if we end up going down that path, and this isn't it. Taking some one-time contingency money is not going to fix the need of the multi-millions of dollars a year that will be needed for this program down the road. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, and it wasn't intended to be a permanent fix. But again, it's a direction we're going. We recognize there's a need, and we're trying to figure out. We can't make those decisions till we know what the legislature's going to do either. So at least this is a small fix towards that. And you know what? If the state works it out and they figure out a way to cover us, it doesn't say a year from now, "We couldn't undo this money and put it back into our general funds." We have lots of options. So consensus?
Mayor, I haven't had a chance to speak yet, so thank you. I generally agree with Councilmember Melner and Councilmember Tomachov. Our staff is telling us that they have increased the workers' compensation trust fund and the contingency with this in mind. It's already baked into the budget that we walked in here considering. I was, one of the reasons I was reluctant to raise our, to consider raising our property tax for this cause is because I don't think it's fair to our firefighters to set the stage that the conversation is, "We're raising property taxes because of our firefighters." I think it's just as unfair to set the stage that we're not meeting our general fund balance goal, which we won't be if we move 815,000 out of here. If we move it out of our reserve and put it over into the trust fund, we won't be meeting our goal. And it's just as unfair to say that that's the fault of the firefighters either. We've got the problem solved for now, based on what we, what staff had already arranged for us walking in here, increasing the funds available in our trust fund. And we have our entire contingency fund available should we need it. We don't need to do this. I don't think it's prudent, and I don't think it's fair. So you don't have my consensus. Thank you.
Well, and I appreciate that. Just so, final thing, I was texted this. The state legislature's physical notes is the annual cost is going to be around $37 million per year. If Mr. Boyer, Senator Boyer, is successful, his idea is to divert $20 million back. That's still a $17 million shortfall. Even if they take care of it, it's still a $17 million shortfall. And that's not talking about the flat tax if that goes through. So I appreciate what all of you said, but I think that this is something that is the least painful. Nobody had to raise taxes, and we can put some money off to the side if we need it, if we don't need it. And things get better for us, we can always put it back into our general fund. I do have consensus for it. So with that, thank you. We'll move on to the next.
The next slide that you'll see are the transfers for fiscal year '21, '22, both in and out of the general fund. Transfers into the general fund include public safety sales tax from both police and fire for a total of approximately $30 million. Transfers out of the general fund include $2.4 million for vehicle replacement, airport special revenue at $147,000, cap grant at $64,000, public housing at approximately $387,000, grip stick of $2.2 million, the interfund loan of $1.7 million. General fund capital projects is about $75 million. That includes the project that has the appropriation for the American Recovery Act and the Glen Lakes proceeds. Debt service for the PSPRS refunding bonds that we're issuing of approximately $5.7 million, and then debt service for MPC and excise tax at $35 million, for a total of $122.4 million.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure I know what the interfund loan is. What is that?
Mayor, members of the council, that is the, we call it the maintenance of effort, but it's the payback to the enterprise funds for the loan for the NHL payment from a few years back.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
It's the repayment of the general fund paying back the enterprise funds for the loan for the NHL payment from a couple of years ago.
Well, that wasn't a loan to the NHL. Okay, well, it was an internal loan, but it wasn't a loan to the NHL.
Right, yeah, the payment to the NHL. So the next few slides we're going to go through are highlights from the budget that include departments that had any supplementals that were added, and there's also capital projects that are included within these slides. The first of which is community services, the community action program. The Community Action Program had three FTEs added, one for a cap intake person and two cap program coordinators. Excuse me. There were, excuse me. There were grants for utility rental assistance and a grant from the U.S. Treasury Emergency Rental Assistant Grant. CDBG also received community revitalization grants and an IT project for a grant and case management, and there were also emergency shelter grants added. Development Services has a few new FTEs, two building, residential building inspector specialists, an inspector specialist, a development services representative, and an administrative support assistant. Economic Development had one FTE added for an arts and culture coordinator. The Fire Department has eight new FTEs that are grant-funded for the second MRU. There was appropriation included for the vehicle and equipment for the second MRU, appropriation for thermal imaging cameras, the ELOC systems for the medication refrigerators on the trucks, SCBAs, which are self-contained breathing apparatus, new and replacement turnout gear, and appropriation increases for contractual services for CAD dispatch and also contracted medical director services. Human Resources, the appropriation was included in both risk management and workers' compensation trust funds, which we've just been discussing. There was also increases in the benefit trust fund, employee incentive program for innovation or excellence in service, appropriation for the tuition reimbursement program, and then appropriation for the EAP traumatic event counseling. Innovation and Technology had three FTEs added, senior systems analyst, an enterprise GIS administrator, and an IT project manager. There was also funding included for temporary staff and increased funding for software maintenance, cybersecurity, and equipment replacement. The IT projects that are included in the Innovation and Technology Fund are the technology-enabled conference rooms, there's a case management system in there for HR, employee notification system, the Data Lake Project, mobile device management, NeoGov, resilience and disaster recovery assessment, and a cybersecurity review assessment. In non-departmental, we have increased funding for the ASTA rebate, increased the funding for unemployment insurance, and added the appropriation to pay PSPRS unfunded liability. The Police Department had six positions added, three communications specialists, a violent crimes detective, a CID person crimes detective, and a public safety media relations FTE. Temporary pay was also added for a video redaction specialist. Cell phones were added for all sworn personnel and the drone program. The Police Department also has appropriation for the Motorola Premier One maintenance and several IT projects, an evidence management system, 911 logging solution, digital forensic storage solution, and mobile data computers. For fiscal year '21-'22, Public Facilities, Recreation, and Special Events added two FTEs, a senior service worker and a service worker. Temporary pay was included for both park rangers and general laborers, and funding for parks' maintenance and equipment for the Heroes Regional Park splash pad and Glen Lakes Park. In Public Facilities, Recreation, and Special Events, they also have several capital improvement projects. These are just a few of them. Saguaro Ranch Park improvements, Heroes Regional Park Lake, the community center upgrades, park restroom replacements, upgrades at Foothills Recreational and Aquatic Center, a splash, a mid-city splash pad, and additional funding for park improvements. Water Services highlights include increased appropriation for raw water, chemical, and building maintenance costs, increased funding for Pyramid Peak Water Treatment Plant and the West Area Reclamation Facility, and capital projects that include Pyramid Peak Water Treatment Plant expansion, the Luke Air Force Base wastewater connection, the West Area Water Reclamation Facility improvements, and the 91st Avenue Wastewater Treatment Plan In the Facilities Department, three FTEs were added, a CIP project manager, a trades worker for HVAC, and then a trades worker for plumbing. A citywide key control program was included, and they have several capital improvement projects, including the city court renovations, the Glendale Operations Campus, amphitheater renovations, and improvements to the city hall elevator and parking garage. Landfill has increased appropriation for credit card fees and attorney services, increased funding for overtime and contract labor, labor for landfill and the materials reclamation facility, and capital improvement projects for the North Cell Liner and equipment replacement. Solid Waste has a new FTE for an equipment operator and a new FTE for, another equipment operator, one for street service and one for curb service. There's additional funding for additional credit card fees, a new program for the illegal dumping mitigation team, increased funding for shop charges, and their capital improvement projects include equipment replacement and solid waste process improvement software. Fleet has additional funding for total vehicle replacement and additional funding for contracted services, vehicles, supplies, and software maintenance. HIRF has three new, excuse me, four new programs included, one for the barricade program, a pole painting program, utility cut program, and the illegal dumping mitigation team, and capital improvement projects that include pavement management and pedestrian LED conversion. Transportation Sales Tax has a new FTE for an airport service worker, additional funding for the regional ADA program, and the pavement management program. Engineering includes the addition of two FTEs, the Director of Engineering Services and a Principal Engineer or an Architect for CIP Administration. There's funding for temporary contract positions for a CIP project manager, a contract analyst, and two inspectors, and their capital improvement projects include the storm drain at Bethany Home Road from 43rd Avenue to 51st Avenue. And with that, we will pause so that we can get council consensus on the budget.
Any discussion on any of those?
Mayor?
Yes?
Just a, a general comment. First of all, I want to thank senior staff and budget staff for the effort and work put into hosting nine budget meetings. It was a Herculean effort, and it is much appreciated. I know how hard you all worked to present this material to us. I always find the budget process interesting. It's where we politely argue about everything. And there's a certain amount of push-pull between the things that staff thinks ought to be in the budget and things that council would like to see in the budget. So it's been a healthy discussion over those nine sessions, and I think we've come to consensus and have developed a budget that, that everybody can be proud of and live with. There are a lot of good things in the budget, too many to, to go over, and, and you all just went over each and every one of them not more than two minutes ago. So I want to thank you for your work. I am pleased to see this budget coming forward. I support it wholeheartedly, and thank you again for your work. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I too want to take a minute to thank our staff, city manager, and all the leadership for all your diligence in creating the budget, bringing it through us, and always accommodating our requests and editing that budget. Really do appreciate you. But I want to take a minute to thank the council for the council's leadership in approving a project in last year's budget, and I was, I had the pleasure and privilege of touring the new splash pad over at O'Neill Park, and it's just absolutely great. While we were there with staff, there were five families trying to get in the gate, and unfortunately, because it's not open, we weren't able to, but what they said to Janet was, don't worry, we'll wait, it'll open up in May, we'll get there. So they are extremely excited, and this budget here and last year's budget only improves our city and each of our districts for our residents. So thank you very much, and thank the council for, for supporting the Splash Pad O'Neill Park, and I, I hear there's some other improvements coming along, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to jump on that bandwagon of thanking the staff for the dedicated effort they put into creating and bringing forth these budget items. And we've had some very robust discussions, and I think that's good. I think we, we come to a better solution when we have robust discussions. And we may not always agree, but I think the end result is always better when there's a robust discussion. And I, I just feel like we've done a great job this year with our budget, and I appreciate everything that council and staff has done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to thank staff. I know it can be difficult hearing, you know, it's like trying to herd cats sometimes. But I think, you know, I think, I know staff puts a lot of effort into the budget, and I know my colleagues up here, we take our responsibility representing the citizens of Glendale really seriously, and we put a lot of time and effort into trying to bring forward a budget that's going to really benefit the citizens of Glendale. So I appreciate your patience with us as we work through this. I know it can be difficult at times hearing, you know, from all seven of us up here with different maybe perspectives of how we look at things, but I think at the end of the day we arrive at a budget that is, you know, really, really well researched, well thought out, and really benefits the citizens of Glendale. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, my thanks to staff. Every year you do a terrific job of, of putting together a proposed budget, walking us through our ideas, and incorporating them when we have consensus. It's a good budget for next year. I can, though I don't agree with every detail, I do believe I can agree with it in the whole. And fellow council members, good work. You know, this really is the nuts and bolts of our job, and I think we had a grand total of six or eight people watching on Facebook Live, so it's so good that they know. But no, it's, it's a good, it's a good process, and we've turned out a good budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the whole council on this. And what the good news is, a few years ago, we argued because we didn't have any money. And so this is a much nicer way to end our budget year with having money to pay for the things that our citizens deserve, thanks to the leadership of the city. Thank you. I, I remember, I guess it was eight years ago or nine years ago, first budget that I had to vote on, it was a no vote. Some, some of you might remember that, but it's because we, we didn't have a balanced budget. And at the time, I was told, well, it's really close. Really close don't work unless you're throwing hand grenades. So pleased that we are where we are today, and it's, it's, it's a combination of literally every soul that works for this city. People that represented, the management, the council, and, and each and every person that gets up every day and goes out on the front lines and either picks up the trash or digs the ditches or sprays a graffiti or whatever they do, it takes all of us to make it work. As far as you ladies, I, I, I feel bad every year when, when we start this process because you all usually walk out of here kind of, kind of hobbling and bruised and beat up a little bit, and, and I hate to see that, but I, I hope all of you keep in mind that sometimes as, as rough as this council can be, they're wanting to do the right thing. And, and we appreciate so much that you understand, that I believe you understand, that you keep coming back each and every day, so I think you love the city as much as we do. So excellent job. Now hopefully next year we won't have as many meetings, if that'd be okay with me. But I think we, I think we turned out a good process. I think we turned out a good product when we're done. So, Mr. Phelps, congratulations to your entire team, sir. Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, we also want to thank you all for dedicating the time for, to go through nine budget workshops, and also for the feedback. We do appreciate it, and it makes us get better. I also want to take a moment to thank the budget staff, Ms. Lindsay, and also Megan Elgin and Chen Murphy. The next meeting we'll have is a tentative budget adoption on May 11th, and with that, that concludes our presentation.
Very good. Mr. Phelps, did you have anything you needed to add? No? Okay, so, council members, if, is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, there be no further business before this council, the meeting's adjourned.